Called order the May 26th meeting of the Peterstownship Council. Mr. Lower, the roll call.
Mrs. Merrill.
Present.
Mr. Steigel.
Present.
Mr. Art Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Mr. Merkels.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here. Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just please run spell check before you pose them.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, special reports.
I wanted to start off by going over updating information with regard to COVID-19 and its impact on the township. Chief McLaughlin is also here to answer any questions council might have about the current situation. But, you know, as I had stated before, I think in terms of Peterstownship, the impact, the financial impact is going to be more of an impact to our revenue streams as it is to an impact to our expenditures. One of the things that's in your docket tonight, and you will continue to receive it for the remainder of the year, is this chart that looks like this. It gives you a five-year history of major revenue sources, and that red line shows the 2020 budget. And so you can begin to compare how we're progressing this year as against other years. And so, for instance, if you look at the property tax, and it's early yet, we'll have a better idea next month, but, you know, the property taxes are pretty much in line. And I would fully expect that in the case of the municipality, that there won't be an issue with regard to property taxes. This actually surprised Ryan and us a little bit, but we're going to have a better idea at the end of next month. But the local services taxes, you know, the tax you pay for working in Peterstownship is actually running a little ahead of where it was last year. So, again, I think in all these things, it's going to take us to get done with the first half of the year to totally understand exactly where we are. As we expected, earned income taxes running slightly behind. But I would remind you that one of the things that occurred is that the date for filing your return has been moved to July 15th to April 15th. And if I had to guess, people who owe money as a result of filing are the people who have chosen not to file up to this point. The other thing that you have to keep in mind is the way this tax is collected now. So the money for April that was earned and taxes paid on for people who lived in Washington County is accounted for here. The money that was earned by residents of Peterstownship who worked either in the city of Pittsburgh or in one of the South Hills communities in Allegheny County is not yet accounted for. And I think we need to be able to see what that impact is, and you won't see that until the end of this month. That money's collected by Jordan Tax Service, is transferred then to Keystone Collection Group, and it always runs 30 days behind. So we're going to have a better idea of what's happening with earned income tax at the end of the month. Real estate transfer taxes are down, and they're down significantly. I think this might in part be a reflection, it's been very difficult to be able to sell a home in the last 30 days. The other thing to keep in mind that I pointed out before, this tax source by its very nature fluctuates greatly from one year to the next. So you can see where we budgeted this at $1,006,000. Last year it was 2.2 million. So because we approach budgeting for this tax on a very conservative basis, I would hope that we'd be able to beat that number. I think once we move into green, I think we're going to get a better idea. I can tell you, we're signing lots of lien letters, and the vast majority of those are for refinancies, but what we're seeing is an uptick in that activity in the real estate market. So one of the things I wanted to talk about also is that if, in fact, the governor follows what had happened previously when we moved from red to yellow, I would fully expect that when the governor has his press conference on Friday, that we would be moving from yellow to green. And if it follows the pattern from before, that will be one week out, and that would be that on June 5th, we would move to green. And even if it does not occur on this Friday, I would assume that it would occur on the following Friday, if for no other reason than the governor is committed to having the entire state of Pennsylvania by June 5th move to yellow. And given what you see in the eastern part of the state versus the western part of the state, it would seem strange to me that we would both be in yellow at the same time. So I would fully expect that we're going to make it to green. And what that means is, under green, they're still strongly recommending, to the extent that people can tell a word when they do that, that businesses within person operations have to follow business and building safety requirements. And so you're going to still see in places that, like, you know, the markets, you're going to still see people, employees required to wear masks, you're going to see signs posted for people that wear masks that are coming in. Childcare is going to open completely, congregate care restrictions are going to stay in place, and then there's not really direction with regard to schools yet. So in addition to things related to work in congregate settings, there is another, if I get this word. You know what, Brian, can you? So there are also these social restriction things. So large recreational gatherings are still restricted. I'm assuming with that in place that we are not going to want to do the concerts in the park in July unless council tells me differently. The one thing I will tell you about that, though, if we actually, I personally think that if we actually made some effort and people were complaining, that area is so large that you could actually beat up there and do it.
If we go to green, why couldn't we do concerts in the park?
That's totally up to us, as to whether or not we do.
You could do those circles, like they did in Central Park.
Well, again, I think we could, it would take a little while for it, but I think you could actually do it in a way that keeps people separated.
We may not have the people that perform the concerts want to do.
Oh, actually, that's where I'm going to disagree. I think they are.
Perfect.
That I think they really want to do it, because quite frankly, a lot of those things have been canceled. So let me talk with Michelle and find out whether we can come up with a strategy to allow that to happen. Restaurant bars are open, personal care services that everybody's been waiting to open will be open. All entertainment venues, like theaters are open at 50%. I'd like to see construction back to full capacity, and businesses have to follow the CDC and Department of Health guidelines. So what's that mean for us? Well, in terms of our operations, it means that the municipal building, once again, is going to be open to residents, because right now it is not. Having said that, what has worked very well in this building is doing lots of work over the telephone and handling business that way, having people drop things off without having to come into the building. To the extent that we've had to meet with people, we actually do it in this room. We have a set of tables that we sit here that allow us to do that kind of distancing. But so we are going to open the building back up. We're going to begin to phase out work from home. I've been very impressed with what people have been able to accomplish, but there is real value to all of us being in this building. And the fact of the matter is, the building is large enough and there's enough separation in space that I don't believe that could be a problem. The thing we do in the building, though, when we're in the hallways, because you cannot be socially distanced in that hallway, we wear masks. People that wear them in their office, but when we're out and about in the building, people generally have a mask on. So with regard to the parks and recreation, we are going to start to bring back our workload people. This includes the people who do programming, as well as the people who operate the rec center. Once we get to green, youth sports can commence. We've been in touch with the baseball and soccer association to provide them the guidance that we have for the state of Pennsylvania, as well as what we have been able to glean from the Park and Rec Society. We have asked them to come up with a plan of how they intend to do this, so there's uniformity across the program about how we're going to handle doing these programs in a safe manner. I would expect that as soon as they can, we're going to allot people back on the fields. Outdoor recreation facilities, including the playgrounds, field parks, skateboard parks, and camping shelters, will be able to back up again. We're going to open the restrooms up, they've been closed. We're going to try to clean the restrooms at least twice a day. The rec center is going to be able to open back up, and we're going to begin recreational programming and what we aren't going to do in the really large areas.
So to clarify what you just said on the prior slide about the youth sports and talking with the sports associations, are you leaving it up to them to come up with their plans for how they're going to manage their children and the parents and everybody else?
We're asking them to develop the plan and to submit it to us for our review. What I am of the opinion is, we have provided them all the information they need to be able to do that, and I think do it safely. I want to see what the plan is that they've come up with, because quite honestly, I think we'll get far more buy-in from the athletic associations if it's something that they feel they have ownership of. And the fact of the matter is, on a day-to-day basis, when those kids are out in the park, they're under the supervision of those coaches, and we really are depending upon the coaches to do the right thing. So, you know, there's no way for us to be at every practice and every ballgame.
No, I wouldn't expect that.
So we're trying to do it in a cooperative kind of way, as opposed to coming up with some dictate that they may question, so.
Paul, are we opening the water fountains?
Hadn't thought about that. Hadn't thought about that. I'm going to have to give that some thought. I think that may be a problem.
What about the concession stands?
Well, there is information that's been provided then with regard to concession stands, and what the guidance is that we're getting from the state and from the Park and Rec Association is that prepared foods, like, you know, selling a candy bar in a raffle is okay. It's when you have a meal preparation and things like that that present problems. So again, we've provided this information to the athletic association. We're going to see what they come back with, and then we're going to have a discussion.
Well, related to that, I think the sanitation after, before and after the cleaning has to be a part of the plan.
So with regard to the library, the library has started to do curbside circulation of their books. There were 157 books put on hold today, so people were very interested in.
Is that tomorrow? Is it actually tomorrow when the people start picking up?
They, well, they have been returning last week, they're going to be picking up today. And the reason I know it's 157 books is Mrs. O'Link was over today pulling books. But the library is going to be opened back up again, and it will be open for normal service. One of the things is that we are going to ask employees to wear masks and do social distancing. It was going to, having talked with Mrs. O'Link and Ms. Harmel, I think the three of us are of the opinion that we would like to be able through signage to strongly encourage people who are patrons who are coming in to wear masks, particularly when they're in a space where they're checking down a book, when they're, you know, standing in front of somebody. But we are not going to make that mandate. We are not going to stop people from entering the library who don't have masks on. I just think that would be problematic for the employees to attempt to enforce. We aren't going to start out with any large programs over there. The one thing that we are going to attempt to do is, and I don't know to what extent the tutors will still be around those schools on concession, but the library is used by a large number of tutors in the afternoon, and the nature of that activity is an adult and a child in very close proximity. And I don't think that that's necessarily something we want to start out with, because one of the things that we need to do inside the library is create an ability to separate people and to be able to monitor that. So we're going to probably start with no tutoring occurring there. And that brings us to.
How are you going to disinfect all the books when people touching them?
Well, what we're going to do is that when books are taken out and then returned, the books are going to sit for three days before they're shipped. That's exactly what's happening right now. But what you're not going to be able to do is to disinfect the book as someone takes it out, looks at it, says, "Oh, I'm not going to read this one." So that, you know, that's.
Isn't this whole process kind of like asinine? I mean, really?
Amen.
I mean, you know, you could go to Giant Eagle, you could go to a bunch of places, but a couple of kids can't go on a ball field.
But they are going to be able to go on a ball field.
No, I mean, not.
Well, I.
I mean, I understand, you know, you want to adhere to all this strict activity, but like, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, but this is opening things up. So this should be happy with, because this opens the library up.
I'm happy, okay.
In terms of public meetings, I wanted to have a discussion with council, because council continues to meet in person, the planning commission meets in person, and the zoning hearing board meets in person. And the planning commission and the zoning hearing board are kind of taking their cues from you. And I guess I have questions in three areas. One, you know, to what extent do we want to continue with taking written comment on non-agenda items? Or do you want to open this up for people to come back? I think, you know, even tonight, we have an agenda item that involves residents, and you can see residents are here, and I think we need to continue to do that, but I don't know whether council has an opinion or whether the written comments on non-agenda items should work.
I think that should remain. That's my personal opinion.
Is that?
What should remain? Let them come in or not? Some written comments. We haven't got a whole bunch anyway.
Frank, I would have to disagree. I think that we don't normally have a room full of people here as an audience. I don't think that's going to change once we go green. I think if people want to come, they come. If they want to send in a comment, they could pick which way they want to do it. I would rather not restrict people from coming, because sometimes people react after what we discuss on an agenda item. So that's been an opportunity that's been lost. So I would rather give people the option, as long as we space chairs like we're doing, and encourage them to also wear masks.
Okay, I got a question. It's that, you know, we say we're going green, whatever that means. I think we can all agree that green doesn't mean normal. It's a long way from it. How long does anybody think this green is?
I don't think anybody knows if you're.
Well, I know the governor doesn't know.
Well, I don't think.
The governor doesn't know, and the governor has said, listen to me, the governor has said that his definition, this is the third time the goalposts have moved, okay? His current definition is, until we get a safe, effective, and lasting vaccine. Does anybody know that? This is a coronavirus, okay? Comes from a family of coronaviruses. It's the same family as H1N1 and H3N2. Anybody know how long it took to develop a safe, effective, and lasting vaccine for those two?
Five years.
There isn't one.
There is one.
There isn't one.
There's no vaccine for a four.
They've never, they've never developed one.
Well, there you go.
So, I mean, so what are we talking about?
Damn, I missed that one.
Yeah. So he says they want a safe, effective vaccine, and they've never developed one for former viruses. So how long does he think this charade is going to go on? Five years, 10 years, 100 years?
Five years. Well, I'm with Frank, though. I don't, I think green doesn't mean we let audience comments come in, but it's mine.
Well, let's just talk about how long green goes on. I mean, are we going to sit here with masks on for five years or a year or six months? I'm not.
At least until 2022, when Wolf leaves, or 2023, when Wolf leaves office. That'd be my bet.
Relative to the audience comments, I think the written comments are fine to come in. If someone feels strong enough after it's addressed at the council meeting, we could offer them a reappearance with the issue. But that would accommodate some of what Mrs. Merrill has referred to.
Well, that would be, I mean, I don't see, if you send in written comments, and we discuss it and we resolve it, then it's over. If there's something else, they could always say, "I want you to put it on the agenda."
Right.
And that's a different thing.
But if we've already voted, excuse me for interrupting you, but if we've already voted on an item that they have an opinion on, they could still make a comment that it's going to do no good. All I'm saying is, is in the course of the meetings, we offer people the opportunity to come forward while we're having discussion or after our discussion to lend their opinion. We're eliminating that opportunity. Now, I don't know if there's anything coming up that's going to be a major concern, but to me personally, I would rather let people come if they want to come. That's my opinion.
I don't think they're going to be the takers.
You guys are avoiding the question. How long are we going to say, "Okay, send in?"
We don't know that.
We don't know that, but I think we're trying to figure out what to do in the short term.
Yeah, the short term is going to be for how long?
I don't think we could just go back and say the way it was. I mean.
Well, okay, so is this, you know, it's going to be a month? Is that okay? Or two months, or three months, or six months?
Because there's a limitation, how many people you can actually put in here.
Let me look at my crystal ball.
And are you going to select, "Well, this person can come in and this person can't"?
Well, but even if we had, see, I think there's two different kinds of people who comment. There are people who comment on things that are not on the agenda, and that's one set of people. But there are agenda items, and I, you know, just as tonight, if we have an agenda item that impacts people, we need to accommodate them, and they need to be here. And so, and I.
I'm fine. And I agree with that.
But so I think you're really making, as far as I'm concerned, two sets of rules. What, you know, how do you handle non-agenda items? And how do you handle agenda items? And again, I think with, if we're having something that impacts people that's on the agenda, we very well can't tell them to stay home.
No, I don't think.
We've got our agenda and plenty of time. If someone wants to come in and make a comment about an agenda item, they can, they could.
But what are you going to do when you have an issue like enforcing the sprinklers? Remember how many people came in from that plan? I mean, you're not going to be able to fit them in your six feet of park.
Well, I think what you're going to end up doing, because we need to get to a point where we can have public hearings again, and not that our public hearings ever cause lots of people to come in, but we need to be able to do that. And the other thing is, come June, the planning commission has plans back on board. And you know that brings people out, because that impacts neighborhoods. So I think what you would do in that circumstance is make a determination of how many people we could cooperate with being in this room. And you would give people a chance to speak, and when they were done, you would have a holding area, and you would allow somebody else to come in, so that you could maintain the capacity of the room.
Okay, so how long are we going to go with no tutoring and no large programs? And how long is that going to go on?
Well, I'd like the tutoring not to happen again, because I would rather us not have liability of what might happen, teacher to child. That's my personal opinion.
Another perspective on it.
You know, I would rather that as far as large programs, I think that counts.
But Dave, the answer to your question is, with regard to these meetings, whatever rules you create, you can change at any time. So if council gets to a point where they think that, you know, how these meetings should be held should change in terms of the way we arrange the room, allow the audience to come in, wear masks, don't wear masks, you can do that at any time. There's one thing the state of Pennsylvania has said, that where there are all these rules for businesses, in terms of a municipality, they look to the municipality to set its own rules, because they entrust us to do it safely. So we can do whatever we want.
It's not going to be very long before businesses.
Let's talk about our neighboring states. Ohio, where are they right now? Well, I'll tell you, you can have a wedding, up to 300 people. Barber shops are open, the hairdressers are open.
So is West Virginia.
Bars are open, liquor stores.
The bars and liquor stores, you can eat dining in.
I'll forget them.
Maryland, West Virginia, Ohio, all open.
Ohio is 50% too for dining in, I think. We sent people over there.
And I think that is going to be probably the next.
We've got to ask ourselves at this place, you know, why are we doing what we're doing? Nobody else around.
Somebody tells me I'm going to go to jail if I don't put this on. There's no law that says I have to wear this.
No, there isn't.
What is the occupancy of this room, do you know?
67.
67.
Under current guidelines. Under the.
Fire code.
Under the fire. Yeah, but see, what, the way you would figure this out is, you know, what the Park and Rec Society has looked at for spaces, and I think they've come up with a good idea, is you're looking at 36 square feet for.
That's easy math.
Yeah. Well, you take the size of the room, you divide by 36, you're good. So it's going to be less, it's not what that says, because the way we are set up conventionally doesn't offer that.
That's a good point.
But that poses the question, when we need the audience, that's the only thing we need to know.
No, I think if it's a non, something that's not, if it's an agenda item, you can't tell residents they can't come in and speak about it.
Right.
We don't need to have, at this point, until we're in the next phase, whenever that may be, I don't see why we need to change it from the way it is now. You know, if someone wants to comment on something that's not on an agenda, let them do it, and if we have to put it on the agenda the next time we do, and they can come in and discuss it, but, okay. That's my opinion on it.
I think, I think we do it the way we did, is that, hey, you know, when your item on the agenda is up, then come in and talk about it, and you leave, and the next group comes in. That works.
All right, I mean, we got two wonderfully penned letters to this meeting. Two, three?
Yeah, three.
I only got two here. Well, anyway, I'm saying, we, now, this is absolutely fine, as opposed to having these, having these residents have to come in and speak their minds, but what about the next one? Or at least get down to see.
So what we're going to do, just so I understand, we're going to, we're going to continue doing what we're doing. People write in for things that aren't on the agenda, invite people in when there are items on the agenda. The next thing is.
So that eliminates people just coming because they want to hear the conversation? Is that what we all agree, that people can't come, even if they don't have a personal agenda item? Is that what we all agree?
It's not what I agree.
Pardon?
You mean, come to just attack the meeting?
Just like people can't. We have some people who come in.
It's a public meeting.
So that's different from what Mr. Lower just said. It's my opinion we should open the meetings. I think we need to monitor the number of people. You're pretty good about knowing what's going to be a hot topic and what we might have a lot of people, but we don't traditionally have a room filled. We've never had, well, not never, we very rarely had a full house. And if it looks like.
Why don't we have a sign up? You know, if you are, because we should, we've got to control how many people that we allow in here.
What are you going to do, 50 people show up?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I would applaud if 50 people showed up.
Well, you never know. I don't see, I don't see any problem between what we said and what she wants. If they want to come in and talk about a non-agenda item, they can submit it in writing.
Okay.
If they, if they need to be here because of something on the agenda, then they have to show up.
Yeah, I think that's.
If they want to come and just listen to what's going on in the meeting, I think it's a public meeting, they can come.
Okay.
Just encourage them to submit comments.
Right.
You know, if they come, they come.
Okay, I got it, I got it. I think I understand what you're saying. I'm assuming that we want to leave the room set up this way. Is that correct?
That's fine.
We don't want to go back to the way it was?
No.
No, it's a big deal, but I think it's fine.
And under green, I guess my question is, what does council want to do with wearing masks?
They take them off. Ohio has gone through this whole ordeal without ever having a mask requirement. We are so far.
We are so far off base that they're renting airplane trailers to bring attention to our governor.
Well, I think, I sort of agree with Mr. Lewis, but I think it's a personal thing. In my, in my own situation, my opinion is, in this room, the way we're seated now, I wouldn't have a problem necessarily taking off my mask. I might want to continue wearing the mask, and I probably will if I go to a grocery store or go to a public place, so maybe we leave it up to each person's choice.
It's up to you. I have no intention of going to a football game anytime soon, but, you know, you sit here without a mask, that's fine.
I'm not sure I'd go to the Little League sports group games without a mask, but that's just me.
Okay, so we're going to, what I hear, we're going to allow people to make that noise in the room once we get to green.
Thank you.
Could I back up and ask one question? On a prior slide, you commented about, or maybe it was in their conversation, you talked about the construction activity starting up again. What's our expectation for how public works is following the guidelines? Because the state guidelines were pretty specific about masks and social distancing and number of people working in close proximity. Or is public works expected to follow those similar things?
And, and they have been divided up into small groups that generally work together. They can't do everything, they can't do every aspect of their job without getting within six feet of each other. And the one area where I struggle with them is the same thing as with masks. But I, I think there's been a real effort there. They actually report to different locations in the morning, so they're not all reporting to one location. So I, I think they're attempting to be safe. It's a little bit harder given the nature of what they do.
Okay, Paul, let's move on.
If you have any questions for Mike.
Quickly, a rundown, as we've had a lot of daycares begin to open, daycares, early educational facilities in the yellow phase. This brings us back within the fire department to make sure that they're meeting their required fire safety needs monthly, things like that. That's been a change since the last time that we've met. We have been getting a lot of occupancy requests, much like we talked about here earlier, and the occupancy of this room is sixty-seven. We'd be able to meet with 50% of that for the green phase. So if you saw the restaurants, personal care establishments, that would be used to lawn, things like that are able to operate at 50% capacity. A lot of them don't, don't have those things posted. The last time they would have gotten an occupancy was when they established that business, and if they didn't hang their sign or lost it or whatever it may have been. So sometimes we're searching through archive records to find those, or even their original plan, or last resort, going to the building and actually manually doing their occupancy.
Who supplied those signs?
We have, as the township's.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I got the buildings, no one ever gave me a sign.
And sometimes it's just one of those things that, under older administrations or things like that, when there's been an occupancy, they've given them a small certificate or the large fire code occupancy and with how unattractive they are sometimes.
Probably filed with your elevator certificate.
That's right. But that's where they could be. But we're assisting a lot of businesses with that, and with the green phase being the next anticipation, we're going to be getting a lot more of them. We continue to assist the township departments with supply ordering and employee management. With a lot of the departments starting to come back, we're making sure that they have the necessary disinfecting supplies, personal protective equipment for the employees to make sure that they're safe here in the workplace. It's much like wearing safety glasses. If somebody sees this as a safety device, just like safety glasses, we're trying to provide that to them. Within our department, we've seen an increase in the medical responses. A lot of that's because the general fear of people going to the hospital, we think, has kind of died down a little bit, so we're starting to get a lot of the medical calls and things like that start to pick back up. Our fire responses haven't really gone down, and they've kind of stayed steady throughout. With that, I'll open up to any questions that you guys may have.
Well, we want to thank you and all the staff of the fire group.
No, it's my pleasure to serve, trust me. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks, chief. Nice job, Mr. Lawrence.
I did have a question for Mr. Law, though. Given the potential for going to green and the mandates for occupancy and all the other things that are listed, what's the position of the township or the police in enforcing this? I mean, are we going to have people going in and checking?
Well, what we have done, and actually Chief McLaughlin and Chief Crimes have been good about this, we have gone in and educated people, but we have not issued citations and endorsements in that kind of way. I think a lot of times if people understand what it is that's trying to be achieved, you can, you can get compliance. And for the most part, people have been very receptive to that, and so I think that's going to continue to be our tack.
They just can't wait to get back to work. I mean, these people have suffered for months.
Yes, because our DJ is the only DJ in the county that can hear us. So we're right here, but if you want to file something to enforce and you're in a parish township, you've got to come here.
Oh, I got it.
Okay, audience comments.
We have three audience comments. The first is from Bob Donn at 107 Southview Court. Thank you, thank you to our township managers and members of council for fully supporting and expediting the street sign installation and dedication on Old Oak Road in 2019 to memorialize township president Captain Paul Gierkart, who remains on the missing inaction, listed as missing inaction from his helicopter crash in Vietnam 49 years ago this Thursday on May 28, 1971. Our region has once again scored low marks for air quality, and many local towns banned outdoor trash burning completely many years ago. Is it a time for a progressive Peters Township to follow suit while only allowing camping, cooking, painting, and recreational activity fires outdoors? Two, in light of the recent tragic dam failure in Michigan, hopefully council is paying close attention to a high hazard, high risk dam within Peters Township, Kennansburg Number Two, one of the three such dams in Washington County, PA. Thank you for your considerations on these important matters, Bob Don, 40-year township president. One thing you should know with regard to burning, we do not permit you to burn trash in Peters Township, and have not since as long as I have been here. There is burning, but not burning of trash. If by Kennansburg Number Two, he means the dam at Peters Lake Park, that park, that dam is inspected every year, we do know that it has a concern with regard to the spillway. We are going to be looking at a plan to remediate that concern. But the thing that you should know also is that if you look at the inundation map for Peters Lake, if in fact there was a catastrophic failure there, you do not have the situation that you have in Michigan. You do not have a large section of the community underwater. So it is a concern, but it is not a concern that's equivalent of what's occurred in Michigan. The second letter is from Steve Rents at 838 East McMurray Road. When we first heard the reports of the spread of COVID-19 and the claims of two million Americans were going to die, we were all shocked and afraid for our community. We have all agreed that we should lock down for a short period to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed. However, it's not been a short lockdown. In fact, there are, there is still no end in sight. Looking at the state's new order for going green, the goalpost has moved again. The lockdown was supposed to protect hospitals, but they are now ghost towns and are furloughing workers. Why is Governor Wolf still locking us down? Many of the things that we were told by the experts have turned out to be false. Two million deaths to have turned out to be 80,000, still a large number, but we are finding out that many states, including Pennsylvania, have padded the numbers and added to those numbers themselves by forcing six patients back into nursing homes where most of the deaths have occurred. It looks like COVID-19 is no more fatal than any other bad flu year. We have been told in the beginning by the CDC that COVID-19 was highly contagious, that it would live on metal surfaces for days, that it was more easily transmitted than any virus in the past. However, just last Wednesday, the CDC revised its guidelines to emphasize that the COVID virus does not spread easily by touching surfaces or objects. CDC spokesman further stated that the primary way to get infected is by close personal contact for 10 minutes or more. We were told that if we, we opened too soon, that there would be a huge spike in infections and deaths. However, the states that have opened, like Florida, Georgia, Alabama, and eight others have never, that never closed, have not seen a spike, but a drop in cases. We were told that masks would save lives and we would all wear them. Now Dr. Fauci is backing away from mandating masks, and the Surgeon General has consistently said that masks do more harm than good. It turns out that we have shut down the best economy on the planet, businesses into bankruptcy. We have also depleted the life savings of millions of Americans over a lot of exaggerated predictions that were not backed up by evidence. California now has more deaths from suicides caused by the lockdown than from COVID-19 itself. It's time to end the lockdown, but we're getting no help in the state. Governor Wolf is no longer acting in the best interest of Pennsylvania, but for political reasons in an election year, we need to reclaim our constitutional rights that have been shredded by the pandemic mania. As Peters Township council, you must take a stand for the people and businesses that you serve. I am only, I am only speaking for my family, but I know many others share my concern. We are asking you to open up our community. We can let the people, you can let the people know that you will no longer enforce Governor, the governor's unconstitutional edicts, that you will not arrest business owners for opening their businesses. That you will no longer be related to our community, free our community. If you choose not to act and defend our freedoms now, then don't pretend to honor today on Memorial Day the millions of men and women who gave their lives for those, for those same freedoms since the start of our creation. And then finally, Ron Volz has sent us an email that says, there's no reason for the farmer's market to remain closed with masks and social distancing. The farmer's market is just as safe as any grocery store. Open it up. We need fresh products, and our local farmers need the business, Ron Volz.
So that one, didn't say, David, they didn't want to have it, correct?
The farmer's market is going to open up. They, they have postponed opening it because they had a concern with regard to safety. But my understanding is that towards the beginning of June, the farmer's market is going to open.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, request from Nancy and Michael Lee for assistance with stormwater problem at 109 Redwood Drive.
So this actually came to council previously back in August of 2017. As you will recall, Peters Township, to deal with a number of stormwater problems that were occurring on private property, came up with a set of criteria that we would look at for making a determination of whether or not the township would serve as a partner in solving private stormwater problems. And it's these four principles that the residents and township agree that a stormwater problem is real and needs to be addressed, that the problem's not a result of a failure of the public storm system, nor does it represent a clear violation of the township's ordinances, that the impacted properties are privately owned, and that the problem cannot be resolved without the intervention by the township. So we've now applied this to a number of persistent stormwater problems with some degree of success. This is one more of those that were, quite frankly, without the township's intervention, this problem cannot, cannot be resolved. So the property that you're looking at is on Redwood Drive, at 109 Redwood Drive. These numbers in here are all elevations at these particular points. What you can see from that is that this all drains in this direction. So when you have significant stormwater events out in this area, this is what happens to Mr. and Mrs. Lee's home. It is surrounded on both sides with water, and that water is, is coming from up in this area down, down this direction. So how long's that been going on?
For years.
Too long.
Three years or for years?
Years.
Years.
Because this, you know, the thing about this is, I went back and looked at this even before, you know, these homes were built. This drained this direction, that, you know, this sits down low, this sits up high, that's where the water's headed. One of the differences, I think, right now is that Mr. and Mrs. Lee have done a number of improvements in this back area that are in jeopardy because of, of the water. And so...
What type, what type of improvements?
Well, there's, there's now a wall back there.
They've got a fireplace. If you want to speak, you got to, you got to come up. It washes my wall out every time it rains. I built a fireplace on the patio back there. We just put a swale back there just now, a swale to direct the water down to an inlet that Mr. Law is going to talk about putting an inlet into the street so we can tie that into that. But it's been going on too long. What happened was, when this event started, when Mr. Kalella built that property up there, the guy that had that before that, that was all vegetation and trees on that whole hillside. Well, Mr. Kalella came in and cleared the whole thing and made it like a golf course. And there we have Niagara Falls.
So...
That's no coincidence. Well, here's what I don't understand, when, when we approved the new plan, we had stormwater planned...
We had retention.
Well, there was never a permit. No one ever applied for a permit.
No, 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 no. That house is permitted.
It is.
That plan is permitted. And the, what, and I don't, I'll be honest with you, and under the weather, Mark, no, you don't want the stormwater, maybe it is up in that area? I don't know that there is a storm facility.
If anything, there's an online system for Mr. Kalella, but that was before my comment, it's not a local one. So there's no detention point between the upper property and the lower property?
No, Paul, and here, here's where the problem lies. And I think, I'm going to spend some money to do what I got to do to make this work to keep the water up my property and collect what's coming off other people's property. In a conversation I had with Mark, when that property was cleared, the disturbance was five acres before you had to have a permit. He disturbed seven acres. Today it's one acre. If you disturb one acre today, you got to, you got to tell people, you got to tell the township where you're putting your stormwater. They never did that, and that's why we have the problem.
Well, that development's not that old.
No.
So, that house...
That's probably what, 12 years, one up on the top of the hill?
Yeah. That house that's up off the hill.
Kalella probably built that house 12 years ago.
This house has been there for a while.
Yeah.
For the record, I know, we know who you are, but the voice recorder needs to have your name and address.
Your name and address.
Michael Lee, 109 Redwood Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
So what we would like to do here is very similar to what happened over on Starborough Drive, if you can remember. Same thing, walked up off of a neighboring property, threw, threw our resident's property, and then they wanted to be able to pipe, get it into a public, public store. So what we're suggesting, and the something that Mr. Lee has already begun this, is that at his expense, that there be a swale installed here, that there be a catch basin, and that he could, that he put in a storm sewer that runs down on this side of the property. For that to be able to work, he needs to be able to get to our storm sewer system. And what we're proposing as, as, in partnership with him, is that we do a 90-foot extension of a storm sewer to bring a, an inlet here and then provide him a place to connect into that.
Who owns the property, Paul, from his property line up that hill? Kalella, they don't, that property is sold.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not a township common area, though?
No, 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 no.
You mean, the middle area between the upper elevation and your property is now sold?
It's sold, it's just sold.
Is that open area in the middle?
Well, that's part of this house.
That's all part of this, seven acres.
Wow.
I'm just asking, if we were to do this today, would that, would there be a detention point in that swale?
No, what there's gonna be is the water's gonna be captured in a swale, taken to a, an inlet, a pipe, Mr. Lee's doing, it's all down to the road.
Okay.
And we're going to, then we're gonna extend our pipe up so that he has some place to discharge that. And again, if you look at what we did on Scarborough, this is exactly what we did.
So it's gonna cost us, what, like five grand?
We're gonna do it with our own, we're gonna do it in-house. Mark estimates the materials are.
You need a motion?
Yeah, you see a motion?
So move, I'll move that we.
Yeah, because you have residents here.
Well, they can still talk after the motion.
Okay, so this is pertaining to approving this. I just want to go on.
You have to give your name.
I'm Kathleen Odi from 204 Brookwood Road. I'm behind him. So I don't have a problem with wanting to fix the water problem. I completely agree, but it's the way you go about doing it, where you could see, can you bring it up where the sewer line's gonna go into there? There is, on the property beside him, there's a sanitary authority, it's owned by the sanitary authority, and that provides my residents with sewage. It's a unique situation, but that the problem that I have is that it's a 15-foot, and it comes right up to his property line.
Yes.
Sewer. Okay, so I want to assure that our sewage is not going to be damaged or interrupted by doing that. I can understand, and I fully agree, fix his water problem, but by doing that, I don't want a damage, be damaged, because that's a utility, we need to see. So that's all I have to say.
So one of the things that was requested of Mr. Lee previously was because this question of the sewer line came up. The sewer line is located off of this property, it's located on the adjacent property. It's contained within an easement that's owned by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority. Mr. Lee has had a survey done, so we know where the property line is. So I would not anticipate that, in fact, that there would be a problem with regard to the sanitary sewer line. Having said that, this would not be the only time that we've ever worked in an easement that has multiple utilities, and, and I think it could be done safely.
Does the sanitary authority look for this?
Well.
Yeah, I'm actually working a lot with Mr. Kalella and Mrs. Kalella, and I've talked to Mark, I've talked to the authorities, and I don't know if it's a big deal, but I'm discussing the talk in my report. I went out and kind of tried to take a picture of this, this property line, and that, sort of private storm sewer done, the ones that were existing, so you can see.
It's pretty, it's pretty far.
It's pretty, yeah, I couldn't anticipate there was ever being an issue with the sanitary authority.
But the thing that I can guarantee, if there was an issue, it would be resolved.
For some reason, why he's still running the other side of the law?
Because you're going to, you're going against the grain.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a motion then, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. We, that we get into an agreement with.
Mr. and Mrs. Lee.
Mr. and Mrs. Lee at 109.
Excuse me, this is a man.
Redwood Drive to, to resolve the stormwater situation.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And we already do have an agreement, I think.
No, well, no, you signed an agreement, they, they haven't signed an agreement, and that's what they just.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next item is award a contract for the 2020 Peters Township Storm Sewer Program.
Now, next is authorization of consent agreement for West Penn Power.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Authorization of appropriate township official to execute a consent agreement with West Penn Power to occupy space under transmission line for Rolling Hills Park.
So to undertake the project at Rolling Hills Park, the, the loop roadway, as well as a portion of the stored water facility, will sit under the easement for the high tension lines that pass through there. To be able to work in that space, we need the approval of West Penn Power, and, and that's what this, this agreement does, gives us permission to, to construct these facilities underneath that.
Move, do we authorize the appropriate township officials to, to the consent agreement with West Penn Power to permit the township to occupy space under the transmission lines in Rolling Hills Park?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
I do have some questions. We can go now, but I'd like to just clarify, I have a key.
Go ahead.
In the agreement, which I know we can change, there's a lot of emphasis placed on safety, the need for barriers, working in the easement, and specific recording afterward. So whose responsibility to manage that compliance?
Ultimately, it's the township's responsibility to manage that compliance, and this particular project is going to be supervised by the managers of mine.
Okay, and there are certain insurance levels expected. Is the township fine with that? I think so.
Yeah, I don't.
What about the contractor, since we have?
Well, the contractor is required to provide us insurance and name the township as an additional insurer, so they would be extending their, their coverage to us.
Okay, but we have to name West Penn Power as a.
We need to name them on our insurance policy.
Forever or just until the work?
No, for this work.
Until the work is done. And, and we're the only signatory to this?
Yes.
Not the school district?
No, because this specifically relates to the work on our project. I don't know this for a fact, but I'm assuming that the school district would have had to enter into the same agreement on their end of the property where they passed the utility.
To that, um.
Provide cyber liability insurance.
To that point, we've already contracted Librani to do this, Librani to do this. Did we include similar safety requirements?
I just want to clarify, this is, this is not for the project that we're currently contracting, this is for the loop work that Nathan's currently designing. This is like a next year thing.
Okay, so we have not contracted it, so we have time to make sure that the potential contractor will include all of the requirements for safety. Okay, and then the only other question, date of completion is December 31st, 2021. Is that, do you feel that's reasonable?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to review this.
All right, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, award of a contract for the 2020 Peters Township Storm Water, or Storm Sewer Program.
This is the thing you do with the, every year.
Yes.
This is the, replacing that old, old corded belt pipe.
Yes.
And so it looks a little better, what is this?
Sluzarchik.
How do you say it?
I think it's sluzarchik.
So, sluzar, sir. I'll make a motion that we approve that bid. Is, is that for the alternate, too?
In the alternate.
In the alternate, and the amount's $121,095 for the base, and $9,610 for the alternate.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Payroll and bills.
Gentlemen, the accounts payable run again include several recreational refund checks, also three bond payments for a total of $328,000 approximately, payments that total about $1,007,000 to contractors, and also our portion of the payment to Peters Township Sanitary Authority for the cost of the Stonehenge project to service the new park. One other thing that's included, $14,000 for the granite monument at the Veterans Memorial, which was renovated in time for Memorial Day outside, looks very nice, I think. There is also a credit card statement included, but I did not have that to review and don't really have backup. So if anyone has questions about that, I'd have to defer to the manager. Any questions? If not, I'll verify that my review of the other payments were appropriate and move they be approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Correspondence, anything we need to discuss, Mr. Lauer?
I, I do think, I'd like to talk about both of the letters. The first is a letter with regard to the Kansburg Lake Bridge project. And what he has to tell you is that this project is, is going to be starting in January, and the, because of restrictions, that there's a limited period of time that they can work on it, but they intend to have it done by August of 2021.
Well, I can tell you those dates are wrong in there. The trout restrictions aren't in place from March 1st until June 15th.
Well, I don't know which trout restrictions you're referring to.
It says right in this air.
Yeah, but I don't know what it does.
Starting in January, so the construction cause, what causeways can be installed in the lake prior to the Fish and Bump Commission's trout restrictions that are in place from March 1 until June 15. I mean, the trout, on Kansburg Lake, the trout season ends February 21st.
The gay season, there's a, there's a restriction they put in place in trout waters to protect reproduction, which there's none in there.
Yeah, there's none, but I mean, but it doesn't, there's no way it goes up.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter because the Fish Commission has told them.
It has nothing to do with the fish season, is it?
Yeah, they're done the same, right, but, well, you know, they're gonna do it anyway, right?
The only other thing, yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be a problem. The, the other letter that I would like to point out is, this is a letter from a resident with reference to assistance that Ed Zook has provided them in terms of, of resolving the problem. And you know, the thing that I would like to point out to council was that this is probably one of Ed's strongest suits, is that Ed takes the time with residents to go out and talk to them and talk to developers to try to get things resolved. And I think this is just one example of the kind of things that Ed brings to that job.
You know, Paul, I'll, I'll second that. As you know, weekly, I've been bothering Ed with an issue on Thompsonville. He's, I think he and, her name?
Kristen.
Kristen. She's been very helpful, unfortunately.
It.
Defenders of cooperation.
You can now appreciate Kristen's.
I would have to make a comment about that. I think that I agree that it's been good that he was able to intervene on the residents' behalf. I do, however, I'm disappointed that he had to intervene because the developer did not do what they said they would do in the original. And I don't know what we do about that, but I think that's a deficit that is a problem, in my personal opinion.
But what you end up doing about that is you have someone like Ed who takes the time to make sure it gets done right, and when people call, he goes out neat with people and, and gets problems resolved. And, and you know, one of the things that I've also said about Ed, and I truly do believe this, it's not, for Ed, it's not only an application of the ordinance, Ed goes beyond negotiating things for developers that are not required to do, and that's always been a problem with the township.
I have another question about trees. Ironwood Development was one of the first we approved as a conservation overlay, and we had an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of discussion about the trees and the removal and the development and how they were grading, and we've had issues with stormwater because of that. But we also did a lot of the rest of it being removed, and there was an assurance that they were all being back. How does he track that up, then?
Well, I don't know in that particular case, because I think, and I have to talk to Ed about it, the, the problem over in Ironwood, as you well know, the developer who was there is gone. And we've been working with Mr. Hoskins, and, and Mr. Hoskins has been pretty receptive to requests from the township, particularly in the area of stormwater management, that he had no obligation to undertake. And as a result of that, I think we, we have resolved a significant downstream problem for existing homeowners. I don't know what, what the commitment is with regard to the trees on that, that property, but if you want, I can talk to Ed.
I just feel if we're going to call a property conservation overlay and identify it as certain, with certain criteria, we should make sure we adhere to them. Thank you.
Because everyone knows that, that development was so problematic.
I know, I agree.
Okay. Anything under reports, these we discussed, anybody? Okay, miscellaneous?
I have a couple things. The contractor, Alex Perez, is moving along on the waterline project on Thompsonville Road. That waterline is, as we understand it, is to connect onto a waterline that goes along East McMurray Road. The project is then going to extend across Bevop Road, and this waterline needs to connect back into a waterline in this intersection. Given the nature of the work Alex Perez has requested, and we concur, that it might be better to try to do this work in the East McMurray right-of-way in the evening as opposed to trying to do this with traffic during the day. But that's, that's a decision that, that council has to make. It would certainly be marks of my representation, if they can, he permitted to do it.
But would it be right in that intersection?
Yeah, they're gonna be working, I don't know which side of the road the waterline actually comes down, but they, they have the, for what I understand, this down, coming down this road is the supply line that goes in both of these directions, so they have to physically connect with that light.
And when they do, they'll probably have to put the signal on flash mode, which is manually flag it?
They could be doing jackhammering?
Uh.
More saw cutting, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure they'll saw cut everything prior to.
We saw a lot of residents.
What time were you talking?
Couple around the corner there.
Actually, we know of one resident right in the neighborhood.
No, he's, he's the person I thought of.
It certainly makes more sense to do it at night than.
They haven't even made a formal request yet. They're just giving it around to people in America to try to mitigate the potential problems with working on these intersections. So they just call it a day, because while we're talking, uh, sense about towns.
I have no problem.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Anytime you can work at night makes sense.
We're talking about two or three nights.
I'll talk to.
The other thing that we wanted to talk to you about, it's been brought to our attention that there is state funding for traffic signal improvements. This is a program other than the Green Light Program. There is a potential for a 100% funding, but I'm not quite sure that that's where we would end up. My question to you is, do you want to look at, if that's the case, and we can get the state of conservation to pay for it, the installation of a traffic signal in Flower Hill and Bevop Road?
Well, it's already.
It beats the warrants, there's no question about that.
I was gonna say, and we are, we already discussed that, is that if there's development going to happen down the road, that that light's gonna have to go in, right? So if we can get it for free now, why not?
Yeah. Well, that development that was gonna go in, it was gonna be required to do this as well through, but if, if, if we could get significant funding, and, and even if we had to put a match in, we could use some of our traffic impact fee money to be able to do this project.
What's the crash data for that intersection?
I don't know that off the top of my head. What I do know, because it has been studied for traffic signals, that it meets the warrants in terms of traffic to justify a signal.
I just hate the idea of it trying to, I mean, it seems like your stop signs go for the most part, of course you get people to do love through them, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's a good even problem, but.
I think the stop signs are better than the money, because you're gonna have that light, there's not that much traffic that goes through those intersections. At certain points in the day, there is, but for most of the other.
I agree, in fact, and what we're talking about is down the road, and if we can get.
I wouldn't be doing it if we were only spending our money on this, but if we, if we keep getting a grant to do it, and there's no guarantee that you're gonna get the grant.
Well, we have to find out the specifics on it.
Yeah, I'd go for it.
Okay, anything else?
Well, so we'll make the application, and if in fact we get the grant and council chooses not to do it, we can just.
Let me ask you for something like that. Could you have it, like, mid-nine hours on flash, one flashing red one direction, and, you know, give it a yellow coming down Bevop and just a flash. you know, give it a yellow coming down Bebop, just a flashing red, or...
I can't answer that, but we can talk to the traffic agent here. We can talk to the traffic agent here, David.
Any other miscellaneous?
Please, David.
Mind somewhat of a question. Having endured waterline work probably for better part of the year, we thank the fact that it's now, I guess, completed on Font Valley, but my question is on Willhaven. Willhaven was paved, and that's fine, but we've experienced the Center Church Road, and I'm, I'm wondering if they've talked about what they're gonna do to sanitize the line and, and, you know, finish the effort and actually repave that?
Well, that's all, the, the problem will happen.
Well, yeah.
They're working from Willhaven to Williams, down Williams, and they're hitting all the sunny streets, uh, right down Landview, Tommey, Sunrise. When they're done with that, they're gonna sand down the whole project.
Okay, so that's gonna be sometime that Center Church is gonna be torn up?
Yeah, I mean, I would think maybe another month, if it was...
I can remember that long, so...
Similar to what they did on their street, Willhaven, what they've covered, you know, all, all streets.
The next question is the right-of-way that the power company has run on Center Church, and the clearing all those trees, and the remaining stumps and, and pieces of lumber out there, what's, what's gonna, what can these residents expect there?
Well, you know what, I, I've noticed the same thing, and, and quite honestly, what I, we need to have someone to do is to go out and find out whether residents requested that that be left there.
Yeah, that happens, that sometimes they request that the water be left.
Yeah, but it, but it can't be left in the way it is, like, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, and there's a couple of properties there that are really cluttered with stumps that are...
Oh, yeah, huge, you know...
Huge pieces of lumber, you need a, a crane or some sort of forklift to manipulate.
One thing that Mark and I were talking about today is that, you know, one of the things we did differently this spring is that we have, for potential work in part-time for us, um, providing for these, uh, utility projects, and, um, Mark and I are both of the opinion that that's made a big difference this year, that there's better coordination because of heat's out there, and so it's been working well.
Agreed.
My questions are related to some of the finance information. We had talked about that, that the CRC's been closed, and we had any requests from residents for a refund on membership fees since they weren't doing...
No, the membership fee is so small, and I don't think you're gonna see that, I think it's an...
It might be small, it's something more than dollars.
$10.
The second question I had, and I had asked Ryan, is, do we approve the cleaning contract, um, it was at a significantly higher cost?
Yes.
And the argument for that is that they defended their costs because they talked about the additional cleaning that was required to the rec center and the libraries if they were programming. However, we've been paying the same contract amount even as the rec center and the library's been closed. Are you planning to negotiate with them for any kind of a refund or re-ving?
We, uh, we actually have, and particularly in terms of the library, we still have a cleaning service in there every day. Mrs. Olenek has used this opportunity to assign them other tasks to do that aren't, quite frankly, within their contract, and they've been receptive to do that. So, you know, when the contract was negotiated, it wasn't, no one envisioned that in fact these buildings would be closed for these periods of time. Those people are still reporting to the site, so I'm not quite sure how we would go about...
So, what are they doing at the rec center?
Well, they are still, um, um, cleaning areas that, you know, and, and in the case of the rec center, unlike the, um, the library, because of course, since the library is still used, um, there's a little to do there. I will, I will give you that, I will give you that.
Well, because we're talking about a reduction potentially in revenue, I was just trying to look at ways to reduce expenses. The other thing I'd like to ask about, there was a recent announcement from the state about Green Light Go funding. Did you see that, and do we anticipate any problems with the project that we have?
No, our, our project is not complete in any way.
But because of the traffic light part of it, Ed Thompson Road, excuse me, Thomas Road...
Oh, no, that, that, that project, Thompsonville and Bebop, that is not part of the Green Light Go.
No, Thomas Road, the traffic light, the one that...
Yes. That's all we constructed, it's all been built.
But the traffic lights not there?
So, we came back to council and explained that that, 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 um, that project would be modified, that there would not be a traffic signal there. When Mr. Mundry actually did simulations to show that traffic signal, it did not, it, it did not help the situation, and in fact, at some points in time, it made the situation worse. So, the, what was done out there was to modify that, to provide those lanes that you see out there.
So, that's complete, there's nothing else that will happen, so we don't have to worry about it. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we don't have the max traffic that we've had, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
I, most people commented to me, they really liked the change, so...
Yeah, and I would agree, we don't have the traffic that we've had, but I can tell you, having looked at that intersection for a while, it does make a difference, that long right turn lane.
Without a doubt.
I think, well, once the traffic gets back to normal, though, I, I think we should expect a few car accidents, people going straight through that first turning lane as somebody's turned from Thomas on the, on McNair. I think that's about to happen.
Well, I'll be curious to see that, because I understand what you're saying, because it would have...
Yeah, people are so used to just going straight through there.
Okay, any items?
One last thing for you, this, um, we have people applying for solicitors permits. I don't know that we have particularly, once we get the green, we have a way to tell people that they can't go out and do that. Chief Grimes is looking for direction from council.
Can't stop them.
Well, they follow the ordinance.
So, but can we ask a question about this? We talked about this last year, and if someone posts a black card on their property...
Then, then they're not permitted.
Then they're not allowed to approach.
Right, you can put a no solicitation, and they're not allowed to approach.
So, maybe if that's happening, we should make sure people know that that's their option to keep them coming on the front.
Okay, anything for the next agenda?
I have a question. It's my understanding we moved that the date for bids for the design of the Aquatics Center to the end of this week. Do you anticipate having that on the agenda?
No, because what I, you know, one, we were taken back by how many people are interested in responding to that RFP. I would anticipate, um, that we're going to have a number of proposals. I think it's gonna take some time for, for the township staff to be able to evaluate those, and then I do want to have a discussion with council about how we move forward with regard to a selection or, or a decision with regard to that, so I think that's gonna take a little time.
To that point, I'd like to ask for some other information. If we're going to be talking about that, I would like to see if we can find out for council's edification, the number of private residential pools that exist in the township, and if Ed or whoever could put that together, I think that would be some information I'd like to know, will be delivered.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that in ground or above ground, or do you want to distinguish?
Well, anything, I, well, I, anything that requires a pool, a, a building permit, I think we can be able to tell you. I don't know that I can tell you, if you have a pool that doesn't require a building permit, I may not be able to...
Do you have a kiddy pool?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a proliferation of kitty pools that have already emerged in the town.
Yes.
I got an item I want to maybe update us on, a couple meetings ago, several meetings ago, we talked about, uh, the Courtney property down there, and him blocking and all that, and it was my understanding that we were gonna approach him about, like, opening that up versus us and Mark and Mark on our right-of-way. Has anything transpired on that?
I have not done any with it.
Okay, could you at least look at that?
Sure.
And then I noticed in the solicitor's report that, uh, at least it stated May 19th, that it said that the, he was working on saying that they filed that motion to discontinue that action pursuant to that settlement. I mean, has it been filed?
I, I, to be honest with you, I don't.
There's absolutely no reason why it shouldn't have been, but...
I, I don't, I don't know that I have that.
All right, I'm sorry, it's all I have.
I got one thing too, I saw we had another accident last week at the intersection of 19 and Center Church.
Yes.
We're gonna have to address that intersection before the high school opens, at least in my opinion, anyway.
Oh, no, I agree, we have, um, we've actually asked Mr. Mundry to take a look at that already. Uh, we're getting him the traffic accident information from this accident, I have, but the other accidents that we...
Related to that, we also did have a request for proposals from another traffic engine company, engineering company, so we get...
We have, we have accepted those, we've interviewed, um, we are in the process of drafting up a recommendation, and it would be my hope that it would be on the next council agenda.
Anything else? No executive session?
Nope. Nope.
We adjourned.